Please come to order. This continuation of our meeting today, 7 May 2024. Before we get started, though, we got a pro- I mean, a one budget thing to take care of.
Or a motion.
A motion, I'm sorry. Take care.
I move to approve amending the complaint in our ongoing opioid litigation to include the additional parties as discussed with counsel and authorize the Commissioner President to sign all related documents.
Second. Our first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any disapproval? Ayes have. Okay, now we continue with our budget work session this afternoon. Our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Jeanette Cudmore.
And my Deputy Director.
And Deputy Director, Ms. App.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
We are back after the public hearing, and it was a long public hearing, but we've had longer public hearings. I remember one time, and Lottie will probably remember, I think, Commissioners, we got to midnight, and the Commissioner said, "We're done," and turned it off, and we all went home. But I mean, that was probably the longest, but this was up there, so it was good. So tonight, you know, the day, we're going to go over the public hearing, the status report, nonprofit funding, because that was not included in the recommended budget. We're going to look at capital. We have two appeals for capital operating. We have a handful for operating. And then, of course, then we're going to, whatever your decision you receive today, we're going to come back next week with whatever is not done or additional you would like to do, and for your final direction next week. And then on the 21st, you approve, and you set your tax rates, and that capital budget is approved. All right? Then we come back on the 11th of June, and that's for the Board of Ed's budget book and allocation. So if you turn to page one, this is the status report from the public hearing, and you can see there were multiple topics, of course. You know, income tax at the top, you know, we had 16 speakers, 11 written comments, St. Mary's County fees and charges. We had one speaker. Leontown Fire Department, we had one speaker and one written. No comments are written from Mechanicsville Fire Department. Ridge, we had one speaker. And of course, on the FY 2025 recommended budget, we had 63 speakers that night and six written comments. Okay? So you can see, we started at 6:30, and we ended at approximately 10:42 PM. There were 82 speakers at the evening public hearing. Public comment period ended on April 30th, and there were 18 comments received after, as reflected in the table above. There were four comments received prior to, and the subject of the comments were principally the local income tax needed to support the Board of Education. All right? We've attached all the public hearing call-in sheets. 17 emails were received during the seven-day period, and one email commented on two different topics. Okay? So of course, in the package, starting on page two, you can see the information about the time starting, and then we kind of go into all the emails and public comment received that we received through the 30th. And that continues all the way through, I believe, I have a little paper clip in here, page 27. All righty. So then we'll get to page 28. Now, again, we did not include anything in the recommended budget for the nonprofits. So what was directed was for the county administrator to come back with a proposed recommendation, and he did. So you can see on page 28, there was an internal group that worked with the county administrator to draft recommendations below for FY 2025. The work group will review the current policies and procedures and develop new policies for FY 2026. To be included in the FY 2025 grant agreement will be a prohibition of county grant funding to engage explicitly for religious activities. So you can see there's five rules down here. Five. Number one, agencies that received a grant in FY 2024 will receive the same amount for FY 2025. The new applicants will receive $2,500 for FY 2025, not 10% of their request. Agencies that are entering their second year will receive their FY 2024 amount plus $2,500. And agencies that submitted more than one funding request will only have one actually considered. And then new agencies that did not earn a passing score of 60 out of 100 will not receive a grant for FY 2025. So you can see the recommended amounts at the bottom. It goes forward. You can see ARC at 130, Boundless Expectations at 2,500, Camp Maria 2,500, Cedar Lane Senior Living at 2,500, Center for Children, actually, I guess that's, oh, that's 15,000, sorry, in between two pages. Center for Life Enrichment, 150,908. Community Mediation Center, 2,500. Cornerstone, they did not have enough scoring, so that's receiving zero. Dream Queen Foundation, 2,500. Feed St. Mary's, 5,750. Greenwell Foundation, 34,500. Lifestyles of Maryland Foundation, 4,500, and you can notice that is their second year, though they had the two plus the 25. Pax Raider, yeah, Pax River Raiders, insufficient scoring. Pastoral Counseling of Center for St. Mary's, 2,500. Seeds of Courage, 2,500. Sleep and Heavenly Peace, insufficient scoring, also with Southern Maryland, so, you know, Drummers Incorporated. Southern Maryland Center for Family Advocacy, 280,797. Again, Southern Maryland Center for Independent Living, 7,500. Special Olympics, Maryland, St. Mary's County, 12,592. St. Mary's Carrying, 10,000. St. Mary's County Arts Council, insufficient scoring. The Mission, received 6,500. Three Oaks, 130,000. Warfighter Advocate, 10,000. Wrapping Arms Around Many, 2,500 dollars as a new entity. College of Southern Maryland, 25,000. Cedar Lane Senior Living, this is their second request, so they're receiving zero there. Chesapeake Charter School Alliance, 2,500. Leadership of Southern Maryland on their second year, 3,000 dollars. Literacy Council of St. Mary's County, 10,000. Patuxent Tidewater Land Trust, 2,500. Reach Back &amp; Lift, 4,500. Southern Maryland Navy Alliance, 33,580. St. Mary's CDC, 5,000. St. Mary's County Rivers Watershed, 2,500. The Promise Resource Center, 8,175. Waterman's Association of St. Mary's County, 12,500. Seven District Optimist Club at 12,000. Camp Maria, zero, because they already received one request. Chamber of Orchestra of St. Mary's, 4,250. Historic Saturday, 63,580. Historic St. Mary's City, 30,000. Lexington Park Rotary, Oyster Festival, 2,000. Southern Maryland Sailing, 3,000. St. Mary's County Arts Council, 5,000. Zero for the St. Mary's County CDC, because that is their second request. St. Mary's College of Maryland, 5,000. St. Mary's Historical Society at 10,000. And the United Committee for Afro-American Contributions at 4,000. Bringing the total amount for FY 2025 to be $1,66,132, and that is actually $38,000 more than FY 2024.
And this will be paid for out of our fund balance?
Correct, and we have enough money, I think, in the fund balance available. I think we have, what, 1.9 million?
Yeah, 1.1 million 917, 121.
So it's always difficult to change the rules in the middle of the game, but I think this is a fair proposal, and I think all nonprofits should be aware that over this next year, we're going to come up with some new criteria for how to meet the needs. Is that fair, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
So do we have a consensus to move forward with the nonprofits?
Got my vote, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and we'll use fund balance for this? Okay? Good.
What's that leave in the fund balance? 800,000?
We actually have one, what, 1.9 million?
We had 1.9 million. That'll put you down to 85989.
859.
Thank you. All right. Page 32. This is the report that we show you every year that comes from the 90-day report from the legislative session. And starting at the top, you can see we have the direct aid, and the top is for primary and secondary education. So this is kind of where we were showing even in talking about for the Board of Ed during the recommended, is that their funding from the state is primarily, I mean, it's kind of flat. So you can see that they were FY 2024, they had 146,260, 2025, and this is in thousands, 146,715. And so that's really an increase of 455,000. And what's interesting is, you know, all the talk with the blueprint, the blueprint funding was reduced. So that kind of like, really? You know? So, but then we also received a report from MSD-E. So this is, the numbers I just quoted were also from the 90-day report. And MSD-E sent us an email with a spreadsheet showing the funding for each county. And their numbers were a little bit different, but I mean, compared to FY 2025 and 2024, there was actually an increase of 260,931. So those numbers are lower. And the differences, I'm not really sure. I know Tammy knows, she's probably back there, but it still shows that primarily the state funding for the Board of Education was primarily flat.
Okay, well, maybe Ms. McCourt could come up if she has time.
Sure.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So tell me, what we talked about previously was the increase from the state was 100,000 or just over 100,000 dollars. And then we saw there was going to be additional funding coming to St. Mary's County, and what I thought was probably to be around 250,000 to 400,000. I'm not sure if that was accurate or not. Can you tell us, because then we have an additional allocation made to education?
There was an additional allocation that was provided under Concentration of Poverty, I'm sorry, Compensatory Education Funds, as well as Concentration of Poverty. However, the Concentration of Poverty monies, which reflected a component of the increase that Ms. Cudmore just mentioned...
Thank you.
...is all restricted funds. So actually, we're recognizing a decrease of 44,000 dollars in FY 25 if you set aside those Concentration of Poverty funds as grant funds, because they're designated for three specific schools under very specific criteria as laid out by the needs assessments at those schools under the blueprint requirements.
Okay, so when, I know we've had this conversation before about restricted funds, and there was almost 12 million dollars of the 19 million dollar last year's fund balance that was restricted funds. Never did figure out where that money came from or why it wasn't spent. But tell me, when you have restricted money, obviously it means what it says, and it only goes to three, so that, in this case, three schools. So that money doesn't get added into your funding?
No. What we typically discuss with the county commissioners are unrestricted funds, where there are no specific grant requirements associated with it. And with regard to the fund balance that you mentioned, with, that was specifically with our restricted funds, as it resulted, as it pertained to our Esser funds. And whereas we had three years to spend on those funds, and we had a three-year spending plan, so that's why there was a lot of monies that were left over from one year to the next. But they were not incorporated as part of our fund balance.
Okay, so by doing the money that we're gonna, I'm sure it's gonna come your way this year, there's been talk that there'll be no additional tax increases needed, because you'll be able to afford or be able to somehow fund additional increases. And I recently reread an email that came through you via, I think, Ms. Cudmore, that talked to, how did you, you expected more money to be coming due to the blueprint next year?
In fiscal 2026?
Yes.
Yes.
And also from enrollment, is that true? Did I read it right?
I don't recall the details on the enrollment, but definitely with regard to the blueprint, we are anticipating an increase in the per-people allocation amounts associated with blueprint funding in FY 26.
Okay, so the things that took place this year that took that money away because of blueprint funding, which allowed you to only get 100,000, will not be there next year to repeat itself?
Based on the information that I currently have at hand?
Unless the state changes their mind.
And that's the hard part, yeah.
We don't know from year to year what's going to be happening with the General Assembly decision-making.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Tammy. So yes, you know, from year to year, it really depends on what, like she said, the General Assembly, and it depends on the county's wealth. I think that impacted us a little bit this year on the calculation, you know, with our income tax, the wage earners, and the property assessments, that plays a part of a calculation that the state does. And then we can see there's additional items below. You can see the libraries have a small increase. Community colleges, this was in part of legislation this year, they actually had a reduction. So CSM felt that. The health formula has got an increase of 316, and of course, this is, you know, 316,000. Transportation, 497. Police and public safety, 172, that was actually a reduction. And the fire and rescue was our 508 grant funding for our fire and rescue agencies. And you can see aid per capita, you know, that went up like 7,000 dollars, and that's, you know, calculated based on your population. Okay? Going forward on page 33, this is all part of the report. You can see there's the retirement payments. The library and the teachers all receive an allocation for their pension. Then you got estimated state spending on selected health and social services. So you can see the items that are allocated for health services, social services, senior citizen services. And then on the top of page 34, some of the selected state grants for capital projects, you can see public schools, 3.6 million and 50,000 for the aging. And it's interesting to note, there's a little star asterisk that says, "The final allocation of fiscal year 2025 school construction funding will be made in May 2024." And that's challenging for, I know Kim Howell goes back and forth, and she says, "Jeanette, I don't have the final decision yet, da-da-da-da," because they're still, we're still waiting on info." And that's, there it is, right there, where they say, "And then, you know, we'll get the information and the amount," but I mean, there could still be changes for the CIP. And if it does change, then we can, you know, we can adjust it in FY 2025, like we do some other grants. Program open space for park acquisition and development, ChaptoCo Wharf at 199,000. Other projects, you can see, have funding. And then Natural, Department of Natural Resources, money for Point Lookout. Maryland Environmental Service, 4.3 million for Point Lookout, so there's a lot of money going down there. And 2 million for site work at the Historic for St. Mary's City's Commission, and St. Mary's College is actually receiving some money. So that is the information that we received that's in the 90-day report, the 90 days of the legislation session. Okay? So page 35 is where we're going to actually start with our appeals. So on the CIP, we actually received two appeal sheets. We received an appeal for solar panels, Dorsey Park, 50,000 dollars, and the CIP sheet is actually page 37. Okay? And this will use funding for 50,000 dollars for this project, and it'll be bond funding. Okay? And then ChaptoCon High School, the only change was that the state funding is actually moving, the 722,000 is moving to FY 2026 and not in 2025.
Okay, well, will that be decided by the May decision, too?
I don't know if that's one of the ones that has a decision. I think, Kim?
Are you here? Yes. Yes. Yeah. You can come up. Everybody, come up.
Ms. Howell, always nice to see you. So tell me, this ChaptoCon project has always been a big driver for us, and it's one of the reasons this Commissioner voted for excise tax and still take a lot of heat over that. And my point to you is this, is this still on track to fall when we think it's going to fall?
Yes, it is. So it is on track. Design is actually underway with the money that we received in FY 24 from the state and the county, so design is well underway. Jeanette knows that I always ask for all of the state money upfront. I want to spend all of the state's money before I spend ours. So in this request, we had asked for additional 722,000 in the, to pay for the rest of the design. We have enough to proceed on and keep the project on track. When the state did their allocations, they didn't have enough for this particular project to fund. I knew I had asked for it in advance. They knew I had asked for it in advance, so it did get moved. So the project is slated. I actually have a discussion continuing with them at the end of this month to talk about how we're going to use our BTL funding and how we're going to fund the project moving forward into our '26 request.
Okay, there was another thing that popped up along the way, and what I mean by that is I remember by doing something like this or somehow jumping ahead like we were, we got an additional, was it 14 million dollars?
That's our Built to Learn Act funding, yes.
Yes, and that's still in the...
That is. So what will happen is, over the course of the next couple of weeks, we'll solidify that project with the state. We'll then go before the Stadium Authority to start working on that MOU to get that money. So the state was allocated the money to the Stadium Authority. They don't do anything with it other than they can control it. Now, if we wanted them to run a project, they could. No county that I know of has taken advantage of that. But what that requires is a memorandum of understanding between the Stadium Authority, the Commissioners of St. Mary's County, and the school system, that that money is being applied to this project. So I'll start that process, and then I'll be bringing it forward for your review and approval, as well as the Board of Education.
So there's no reason to expect any surprises here?
Not that I know of.
Thank you.
We're continuing to work on the project. It is a complex project.
I know.
It's, you know, it's one of the largest we've ever done. It is the largest in the school system we've ever done. And the state is being a really good partner with us as we look to how we're going to utilize all of the funding sources that we have available from the state, because as we continue on and we start talking about upcoming fiscal years, there's going to be new sources of funding from the state. Traditional CIP will not be the only way that projects are funded. We'll have a variety of different ones coming forward. So we're going to look at how we maximize all of that to apply to this project.
Well, you know, these are tough projects, get your head around. And I want to thank you, you're doing a great job, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. It's definitely a team effort back at Supporting Services. Thank you.
Thank you. So Commissioners, do we have consensus to move forward with the CIP changes?
Yes, for me.
Okay, so with that, thank you. And with that, we will bring back the updated budget book format with all the five years showing you and updated debt capacity, and we'll bring that back for the work session next week. Okay? Thank you. All righty. So now let's look at page 38. Now, as you know, we receive our assessments three times. The state website on November, the constant yield letter, and then also March 31st. Okay? So we did receive our assessments, and you can see that real property went up slightly, okay? At the top of page 38, personal property, that kind of went up slightly. And personal property is actually split between corporate and individual sole proprietor. Public utilities, gosh, I don't know what's going on with public utilities, but they dropped, okay? So you can see that in the recommended budget, we had, they were up at 170 million, and they dropped to 152, okay? So you can see down below that that did have a small impact on our revenues, okay? So you can see that real property went up, half-year went, stayed the same. Personal property for sole proprietor went up slightly. You can see that public utilities went down, and that's closer to kind of what we're receiving and showing right now, actually, for FY 2024. And corporate went up slightly. And that actually, so now, compared to the FY 2023, I mean, 2024 budget, it's got about a 2.5% increase, okay? So hopefully, they'll improve in the coming years, but we actually use this. And if you turn to page 39, this is where we show our changes in our revenues. All right? And at the top, you'll see a red, 95,892. That is looking at the current revenues compared to the current appeals for requests for expenses. And that's if we had approved all the expenses, all the appeals, and all the revenue changes, we're short about 95,000.
Is that leaving the 500 and some thousand in Commissioner reserve?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, of course, we have not touched that.
Right.
It's also leaving the 59,900 in fund balance, right?
Right. Well, 859.
Eight, I'm sorry, 859.
Right.
My eight looked like a dollar sign, okay.
Okay. So you can see on this spreadsheet on page 39, we'll start at the top. So your recommended budget showed you had 329,039,996, okay? Broken out how it was. You can see under property taxes, there are the changes, okay, which is actually an increase overall to property tax of 141,561. No change to income tax. Other taxes and fees, we are recommending a reduction to recordation tax, we're just not, you know, that, it's just not coming in as far as trend.
Recommended 500,000?
Reduction.
That doesn't seem like enough. I mean, it looked like we were way off.
We could reduce it more, probably, but...
Well, the last finance report I read looked like we had a projection of 12 million, and we were around, well, maybe, I think it was recordation, and we were only around seven?
Right, so we might be, I'm hoping that we'll get closer to eight. But, and I'm hoping that even next year, you know, because a lot of this stuff, we look at prior-year trends on some of these revenues. Things, I think, have to start going the other direction, you know? So I don't want to do it too low, but I do feel like we need to reduce it and kind of see where we are.
I'm just not sure if we're reducing it enough.
Right, and that's something we're going to have to watch. And of course, you know, I'm still expecting, I'm thinking, you know, income tax, not income tax, interest income is still there. When are they going to change the rates? Nobody really knows. You know, we keep hearing different stories, so we'll keep an eye on that, I think, for next year. We are increasing a little bit on energy taxes. They're coming in stronger than what we had anticipated, and with that rate down a point, what, 3125%, there will be no refunds on the 2024 budget. So when, normally, we'll reduce the refunds that are allocated by 100,000 dollars, we're not going to see that in FY 2025, because the rate is lower per the ordinance, okay? So you can see over in charges for services, we have a small reduction of 31,915 for the alcohol deputy. The expense in the alcohol beverage and the revenue in the sheriff's office for the alcohol deputy, they should match, and we needed to reduce that to keep that match in place. And then there's 120,000 increase for 911 service fees, that's actually coming in stronger, and 4,000 dollar increase for an aging grant, okay? And then what you can do is, you can see under the column where it says fund balance, remember from the available from the June 30, 2023 audit, there was 4.9 million dollars. You reverted the PEGO for Elm Speech of 2.4, and you already used 5.4, leaving the balance, like Joy had said, 1,917,121. And now, with using for the nonprofits, we're down to the 859 that she had indicated. Okay? Page 40, so that's revenues. Page 40 are our expense appeals for the general fund, okay? So what we can do is, we can start at the top. Again, you can see that the top matches, the top of the revenue for the recommended, the 329, all right? And it's broken down by departments, elected officials, boards, and state agencies, other costs, and then transfers and reserves. And there were three FTEs approved in the recommended budget, okay? Working our way down. Now, because you had a public hearing reserve of the 573,263, that actually, it was an expense that we actually reserved that, reversed it. So that provides you funding to do your appeals, okay? Now below, you'll start seeing all the individual appeals, and the detail starts on page 42, and the first one is for reduce health for the public accountability board member. These were some adjustments that were made first, where we had seen in the calculations and reviewing a little bit of the recommended, we noticed some things were incorrect in some of the payroll reports, so we're adjusting it. So they were actually reductions, okay? Two, one was on benefits and one was on salary, and that's now corrected, because we had some vacancies, and the vacancies actually calculated more of a benefit in the salary than what should have been there. Okay? So on alcohol beverage, you'll see that on page 42. We have the ECC.
Can we talk about these as we go through them?
We sure can, we have time, I think.
I mean, the alcohol beverage board looks like it's pretty much awash, what they want to do there to our gain, so I'm good with that.
All right, and I know we have representatives here, if you'd like to have them come up or further explanation or...
I'd just like to have, if they could answer one question. I'd just like to have, if they could answer one question. Requesting to make the position full-time to meet the demands created by the changing scope of the alcohol industry. What's that mean?
Well, perhaps-
People drinking differently now?
[laughing]
Okay.
Do you all want to come up? And we have a seat here, and then we also have a side seat.
You can be my buddy.
Selda Brand, always nice to see you.
Very good to see you, too. So, changing scope, crossing of the three-tier system lines, distilleries, breweries, manufacturers, being given, afforded the opportunity to act as a retailer, as a bar, restaurant, et cetera, adds more on to us. Also, currently what we've been doing is just the basic inspections. That was what our inspector's duty always was, just the basic, go in there, check the paperwork, make sure it's okay. But there's also, it's become, we have a lot of false IDs, so there's an education component that goes in with that, where he can remind people how to look for some of these fake IDs. We just, as a matter of fact, had a business turn in at one event, one night, one Saturday night, turn in eight fake IDs. And these are the real IDs, okay? So-
So they're faking the real IDs now?
Wow. Faking the real IDs, and some of them are really good. And it's scary. But this is all part of it. It's always supposed to have been a little more, the state, kind of, when my inspector does go up to the state trainings, they're kind of expected to do a lot more, or at least our inspector is told to do a lot more. Other agencies are, other jurisdictions do comply with that. They have enough manpower to do so. Some, of course, are bigger than ours, but even the ones that are comparable, it seems like we're a little behind the curve on that. So-
Okay, I read this over the weekend. And one thing that struck me is I know we recently approved, or maybe the legislature approved, for wine and maybe beer to be served at these theater, theater events, you know, like on three-notch theater.
Yes, the nonprofit theater.
Yeah, those types of things.
Yes. So that would be-
Do you have to have people inspect those, too?
Yes. Yes. Anybody who's licensed in the county would be inspected.
Okay. Well, I'm here to support you. I just wanted to hear you tell us what-
Yes, sir.
-changing in the alcohol industry was.
It's a constantly changing industry. And part of his job is to keep up with that. So-
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't know if anybody else had any questions.
Mr. Willenberg, you came all the way up here. You have anything you want to add?
No, sir. Tammy's done a good job. Thank you.
And the reduction of the 31,950 corresponds with the reduction in that revenue.
You got your new vehicle, didn't you?
Yes, thank you so much.
Yeah, because I remember you had that one, the poor guy kept breaking down. And who wants to help out the liquor inspector on the side of the road? But let's hope somebody does.
We appreciate it, and we love it.
All right. Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next one is the MAP INA caseworker, $85,000 from the Department of Aging in HS. And the detail is actually started on page 43.
So, looking, um-
And this is to add an FTE.
Right. At this point in time, I think I am not here with adding any of these FTEs or the SUV, simply because we made some decisions with our revenues. And Commissioner Hewitt even pointed it out during the budget building process that, you know, we grew the rate growth. And so I want to be a little bit more conservative with holding back what revenues we have just as a reserve in case we don't see the growth that we've anticipated.
Right. Ms. Harris, can you come up?
Always nice to see you.
Good to see you.
So you talk here about wanting to do a position for delivering information, referrals, and assistance with completion of paperwork and financial assistance programs for older adults. So I remember years ago when I ran first time, I used to see older adults in the library filling out forms for public assistance, whether it be DSS or whoever they were doing on the computers. So would this position, like, go to people's homes who don't have the ability to do electronically, or they would be not mobile, or they wouldn't have anybody to help them do this stuff?
So we have a relatively new position who does mostly in-home appointments just for that reason. This position would mostly be in one of the senior activity centers. So this is a smaller division within our department, and most of the older adults come to the senior activity centers to talk to staff about all the things that are listed there, to help them with their needs. So we have a person who's designated to go out to people's homes. It's not to say this person would or would not, depending on what the need is. So if there are additional, there's an additional need to send this particular person out to people's homes, then yes, they would do that.
So it sounds like you have it covered, though?
We have covered what we have covered. But we have people who sometimes they, the time that is needed to spend with them is 30 minutes, and sometimes it's a lot longer. So we're not able to see as many people as we could if we had another person. And because the population is increasing, the demand for assistance with questions about whatever, insurance as well as Medicare, is increasing. And the staff members' schedules are booked daily.
So there's a need?
There's a definite need.
What I would propose is to hold off on it now, but potentially bring it back mid-year once we get a better handle on how our revenues are coming in.
Be happy to do that.
I agree with that. If we did a grant, you know, that you could try it out for a year. Some, I mean, think about a grant, you know, the person's not definitely hired. They're in, but I guess-
Stay out of fund balance? Just give ourselves a grant?
Well, give Department of Aging Human Services a, okay, I see you're looking, you don't like it.
Yeah, that is different, isn't it?
Well, I mean, the thought process is, is you got somebody doing it, and you want to make it more robust. I've heard that word used by people before, too.
Robust.
Yeah.
Maybe a mid-year hire?
Well, maybe not a hire, but just see if it works.
Or an hourly employee with less benefits?
But then we do internships where we bring things on, bring people on to see if they can make a difference in the delivery of services?
Sure. I mean, any number of things we can try. I know that this, filling this position would make a difference, definitely, because the demand is there. And the same for the senior, the next one, the senior activity center assistant. The demand for programs and activities, people are clamoring, especially as we discussed, the baby boomers. So a younger generation of older adults are expecting more. They are more physically active. The trend years ago was for individuals to come to the senior activity centers and stay all day, find their place in the center and their lounge chair, maybe play bingo. And bingo is still very popular. And we provide bingo in the centers, but people are more mobile, and they're expecting more. And they're expecting a greater variety of programs and services and activities, trips, tours. It's sort of the same thing.
And later in the day, too.
All times of the day, yes.
So, I mean, one thing is, I mean, maybe bring the position in as an hourly, which would help, you could reduce a good part of your health insurance. And then maybe bring it in full-time.
If it makes a difference type of thing, then consider-
And then maybe bring it back full-time. So it would be a reduction. And then if you wanted to do the vehicle, you could do that at a fund balance.
Because I definitely want to do all we can for our seniors. But again, we also have to be careful how we do things.
I'm at the point of holding off right now.
I agree with Mr. Colvin on that.
Okay.
I did want to point out for the human services position in the Division of Human Services. So that is fully funded, 100% by grants. So we're asking to transition that position from an hourly position to full-time, supported with grant funds.
And that's the one on the 46.
This is page 46.
Mm-hmm.
And that is, that position is on the other end of the spectrum. So we have the older adults on one end, and on the opposite end, we have children, youth, and families. So this helps to support families who have children with behavioral health challenges.
So this 47,000, 516 is fully grant?
Then we would have to add that as grant revenue also, Joy.
Yes. And that would be the difference between the hourly position currently and making it full-time.
If it's grant funding, I'm okay with it.
So move that one forward and also add the revenue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
And then the other two, I mean, we could, I mean, can we do it like a, a look at it again mid-year and do like a mid-year hire or something along those lines?
Yeah, you can probably bring that back. I mean, the county administrator can bring that back on a, you know, an agenda, or even one of the other budget work sessions when you guys get started up on the 26th.
So we can, can do, I don't know if everybody would agree with that.
The funding wouldn't be, yeah, the funding wouldn't be right now in your FY 25 budget, but you can bring it back, and you can kind of see where your revenues are. And if they're coming in-
Exactly.
Then you could also approve it, you know, mid-year at that time, make a decision.
That would be-
Everybody agree on that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Be in touch, David.
Thank you.
If we can recap what we just did there for aging, please?
So I believe the third position, the-
Grant funding.
Convert hourly to full-time position, we approved-
Got that.
With grant funding.
The other three, no.
And that's the only action.
The other three, no, right?
No.
Correct.
And bring them back maybe next year.
Yes.
Mid-year or whatever. And they can see where the revenues are at that time.
Well, can we do the SUV out of fund balance?
Well, do we need the SUV if we're not hiring the other position?
Of course. Do you want to do the SUV and use some of that?
Well, and I guess the question would be, why does it have to be an SUV? Couldn't it be a-
Sedan?
A sedan.
What would be the reason? Maybe Ms. Harris could come in and let us know what the reasoning is behind that.
Welcome back, Lori.
Yes.
Thought you got away, didn't you?
I did. It doesn't have to be an SUV, but a larger vehicle. The caseworker who does the home visits, a larger vehicle would be more comfortable for that person.
Okay.
A smaller vehicle would be less comfortable.
Okay. Understood. Let's make it a sedan.
So we can look at and see how much the sedans were also in the other?
I'd like to see what the difference in cost is.
Uh, let's see. Where did we have sedan?
20,000 less.
They were like $35,000 for the state's attorney, mid-sized sedan. Mid-sized sedan. That could be like a CRV or something, maybe? Okay. That kind of- So 35,000?
I think we can do that at a fund balance.
Right, exactly. Right.
Yep.
So make the, approve the 50, but it's now going to be 35 for a mid-sized sedan?
Yes.
And use some fund balance, Joy. Okay. Okey-dokey. Now we get to, let's see, Arrow Park Master Plan Implementation. And that is actually, looks like that is on page 49. And there's a letter from Medco, 150. And there's a bunch of little attachments in here from economic development. And I believe Chris Casalemas is here.
Might as well have Chris come up, too. But I think this is a good plan to come out of fund balance and-
I agree.
Keep this moving forward.
As a non-recurring.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, commissioners. I do have, I see that the hangers didn't come out on that picture, so I do have color pictures that show where the hangers are going to be. So, Jenna, can you help me pass these up?
Now we've given you too much money for your operating budget.
I probably didn't submit it as color copies. But we also, so-
Thank you.
You know, we're at the beginning of a relationship with Medco. And the first page of this is actually an email from Tom Sadowski, the director of Medco, committing to building hangers once the land is ready. So we want to enter into a long-term relationship with Medco. They've got funding. They're here to help us. So this is kind of the first step in doing that.
And my understanding is even if things end up not working out with Medco, it's still the right step forward, that it's getting the land ready for whoever fills that void and-
Absolutely, Commissioner Colvin. We'd have to do this work anyway if we were going to build it ourselves.
What's going to be Medco's contribution to this?
Again, they've committed to financing, once the land is ready, they've committed to financing the hangar construction as the demand is there. So if someone says they want a hangar, and we already have one letter of intent from somebody saying they want a hangar. So if someone says they want a hangar, they'll build the hangar with their money, and they'll get the revenue back through the lease payments from the owner or the lessee of those things. So remember, we also have county-owned land on the north side. We could probably use some help with Mr. Walshman's property that's around the US MSM building. So there's a lot to do. And they're kind of in this lane. This is what they do. And they're excited about it, and I'm excited about it. So hopefully we can move forward and make some good progress.
All right. While we're doing 125 out of fund balance.
Out of fund balance? Do we have consensus with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
That's getting us down to about, what, 785?
We have, whoops. Hold on a second.
How much?
69989.
Mr. Casalemas, could you talk about the reorg that you'd like to do?
Yes, Commissioner Colvin. So last year, I recognized the need for an additional position in my department, and I requested it. It didn't move forward. This year, recognizing it was even a tougher budget year, I thought that wouldn't be a good move to ask for another position. But at the time, I had a vacancy, senior admin clerk. And I thought about, is there a way to use that position to get more horsepower out of our staff without adding any additional positions? The other thing that was happening was we had a, our ag manager, Don Sasse, had retired. I knew SuVith was going to be retiring, and they'd been here for 30 years. So they're paid a little bit more than newer people do. So overall, we'd have salary savings within our department compared to last year. So this is a way to get more horsepower out of the additional, no additional staff. I have nine staff members, including myself, same number of people, moving a position from a senior admin clerk to a economic development specialist. And I haven't, I have, had two positions that were senior admin clerk, so-
Are you changing people or are you just changing the names of the jobs?
Changing the name. I have a vacant position, so it's changing the classification of that vacant position to an economic development specialist.
Which will be a new person?
New person, yep. I have not done any recruitment, nothing.
But it's not a new FTE.
Not a new FTE. We have-
It's just a higher-paid FTE and more responsibility FTE.
Right.
But with salary savings, it's, the money's on, doesn't look to be too brutal.
Right. There's current salary savings based on the retirement of the two individuals.
I'd be fine with it.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Good creative thinking. I like it.
Very good.
So that's the increase of the 30,265.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Chris. Then we have the additional hours for the museum assistants. And I believe that is on page 60. And Mr. Shepherd is here. And I'm sure he would love to come up.
He's already-
He's always ready. He's always ready.
You know it. And that's an increase of 31,205.
Due to the increase in hours of operation.
So right now, some of those facilities are operated by volunteers?
No, no. Most of them are operated by hourly assistants, who are increasing the hours of operation.
Well, the Drayton African-American school.
Well, yeah, the Drayton is. And sometimes at the UCAC, but we also put hourly staff in there. But Drayton's been hourly, volunteer-only. You're correct. I was thinking of Pontypoint, St. Clement's Island, where the majority are coming from. I was thinking of Ponte Point, St. Clement's Island, where the majority are coming from.
Can you tell us what kind of turnout or participation you're getting in the current hours that they have there?
What the, so, current hours are the noon to 5 instead of the 10 to 5? I don't, I don't know the exact data numbers, Commissioner, but we've seen an increase, and thus, the reason we're wanting to open hours even earlier. People are wanting to get in before starting their days at 10 o'clock at our museums, so we think this will be a good move. Have we got ourselves out of the red yet on the...
I don't know, Joyce. Are we out of the red? Where are we at?
Yes, so...
How far out of the red?
Let me take these others out, hold on a second. Hold on, I'm sorry, I took one of the, wrong one out.
Okay, I want to get you your sheds out of fund balance.
Out of fund balance.
Right.
Yes. And there must be some nice sheds.
Yeah, I would say...
Well, their room is what they are, and that's what's needed. Once we, once we went into the field lining, dragging business with the gators and the equipment, plus the equipment for, they're just, so when, every time you put equipment in, you're having to pull it all back out just to get to the back. All right. And then you have one person, and then you're getting two people there instead of the one. Once we get them double garage doors on them and can put all of that in there, and then we'll keep the other ones, too, for some more storage of the trash cans and all things. Put more doors on them. Yes. You put more doors on them, you can get it... Yeah, either way, that's right. And a single entrance door, they're gonna, they're gonna be nice. Anyway, back to where we were, we added this 95,000?
371050, that's with approving the additional hours for the museum assistants, if you put that in there.
I don't know, I guess I'm trying to understand, we started this exercise...
95,000 negative, and then you moved...
What's that now?
You moved 125,000 out into fund balance, out of fund balance.
Right.
And 35,000 out of fund balance, so that add it back to what you have.
So, that 95,000 is, is that plus now?
It's plus 371050.
Right, because your fund balance, when you use it, it's an additional revenue you've got.
I get it, no, no, I know how that works.
Okay.
But the number's 371,000?
Yes.
And we did not approve the aging.
And the ones that you didn't approve have come out as well.
I got you.
Right.
So, we still have room to help out the sheriff here, too. Yep.
All right, well, I can, I can go with your additional hours and your sheds, well, additional hours, I guess, would be out of this request.
Then we've got the sheds.
And the sheds out of the...
On it, Chapter Co., the Lancaster, fund balance, and then the portable toilet, that is a recurring.
And it's the lack of the revenue coming from the state.
Right.
That just happened at this 11th hour.
Ever, yeah.
Yeah. Well, Lord knows, it seems like you have to have them.
Yeah.
Have to have them.
Only have a choice there.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Come down to Colton's point on a Saturday morning in the summertime, you'll, you'll see the traffic.
Oh, no, no, I agree.
Got to have toilets.
The good news is, it's only 15, that's a lot of money, but it's still only 15.
To another one, this, the state dropped it again.
Yep.
Yeah, we're losing a lot by the state.
Okay, so, we're approving the 15, the 212s, and the 31,255, 205. Yep, and using fund balance for those items identified.
Yep, sounds good.
I'll wait right there, I think I'm coming back up.
You are? For your other stuff, right?
I think he's done, isn't he?
Okay, so, it looks like we're now...
What, to the sheriff?
Sheriff. Hard-to-fill position for station clerks, 49,345.
Yeah. Captain Moses, good to see you, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. This is, yeah, Captain Moses, this affects his division, one of them. Commissioners, what you have here is an appeal for 65,128. One of the main things that we wanted to focus on this budget cycle was what was dealt with in the March memo that Ms. Prattson had and the Franken Associates Compensation Study. One of the critical functions that we have, that is probably one of the, not only difficult to fill, much more importantly, it's difficult to keep, is the station clerks. And, and we wanted to be able to deal with that adequately, and so, we're asking for an additional increase of 49,345 for, to give them that salary adjustment that helps to keep them there. We are current...
Why is it so hard to keep them?
Because of what they're paid, sir. And they're, they're, you know, they have the day sleep, like Commissioner Alderson, and they are members of the patrol squads themselves, and they are the face that deals with the public, not only face-to-face, but on the phone as well. So, they're answering questions, they're validating warrants, they're pulling warrants, verifications, and things of that nature, so they have the skill set that's needed to do the job, they just don't have the salary to match it. And we, we feel that this would do it.
So, now, now, tell me, you had 15 of these clerks approved, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, and how many have you hired?
We only have four vacancies right now.
So, you've hired 11?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I was down at the lighting of the hopeful sign on Great Mills Road, and that night was a Friday evening, and a lot of people there, but nobody was at the police station there. Nobody was at, what's that, District 4, that, on the Great Mills Road?
What time was it?
Oh, we lit it at 7:00 PM.
They're generally there until about 5:00, and I, I don't want to have a lot of police officers sitting in the district station unless they're going to meet somebody there, they're dropping property or writing a report. So, we do have staff there, Monday through Friday, until about 5:00.
To win.
Eight to five.
Okay.
Sometimes longer, if they're needed, if they're needed to hold over, or there's somebody coming in, we're using our meeting rooms a lot more, because that was the purpose of it, so we're hosting more meetings there. So, that's a very busy station.
I hope so. Well, I think, but the thought was, that night was, is we ran out of parking for people, and they just started parking over there, and actually, I parked in front of it myself, and my point being is, hey, there's nobody in there, so who are we blocking? But it was, it was brought up during the discussions with people around there, why it wasn't open on a Friday night, when it would seem to be an ideal time for undesirables to be active.
Right, all you have to do is, if there's nobody there, we've, we have it set up that all you have to do is push a call button, and you're immediately connected to dispatch. So, that we have that, and we work with the Church of the Ascension daily, and all the parking spots on the Church of the Ascension side of the building, that's in agreement with them, that they're, those are their spots, so they're, you're good to park there.
Good, thank you. All right, so, so what you hope to do is fill the other four, but get everybody a boost in pay?
Yes, sir, and keep the ones we have. What we're finding is that they will go to the base, they will go to other places in county government or other counties where their, the compensation is higher.
So, it's really no new people, it's just additional pay?
Additional pay.
And 40...
Yeah, I can go with it, because...
I can go with it.
Much money is we're putting to the district stations, yeah?
Yeah, I know, that's what I said, too. Now, the next one you have up here is just, well, I shouldn't say just, but it's 14,000 for these convert...
It's a conversion, much like Mr. Casalemus. We have realized a vacancy due to somebody going to the base, and that, that victim's rights advocates duties have been assumed by someone, so we meet the mandate by the law. We had to create this position by an unfunded mandate by the legislation. So, although not ideal, we're able to get that work done. Where we really need it is that HR position that we're asking for, it's the only division, it's Captain Moses's division, it does not have a coordinator, and if we could have a coordinator and the HR specialist, we can deal with the speed with which we can hire people, because we are perpetually hiring people, and I know it's near and dear to your heart, Commissioner Hewitt, but the vacancies is something that we're going to deal with. This allows us the speed and efficiency with which to deal with it.
Look, I can agree with that, I mean, the funding's there, and it sounds like it's going to make a difference, so I'm good with it.
Yes, sir.
I'm good for it.
I'm good for it.
Okay, so, add the 14, 783.
So, Ms. Cudmore, that looks like you ended it off.
We might have some money left over for you.
Next page.
Well, I did have, if I may, Ms., where was it? I'm sorry. Ms. Lori Jennings-Harris pointed out that we did not look at one of hers, and it's on page, sorry.
Did we miss one that's not on the spreadsheet?
On page 48. Asking to get, you know, the, increase the meals from $6 to $7.
I think that's on the next page.
That's the $4,000 difference, right?
Right, and that's on...
Oh, we hadn't gotten there yet? I apologize.
That's on the revenue sheet.
That's on the revenue side.
That's the one, okay.
On the revenue sheet, that's included.
That's right.
So, this is, I think we believe we've gone through everything on the general fund. So, Joy, what do we have left over?
So, your fund balance, you have 665, 989.
Hold on, one more time, how much?
Sure, 665, 989 for fund balance. And on the general fund with 316, 922 with those last two adjustments.
315, 922.
316, 922.
And that'll go into the Commissioner's Reserve.
Do we have consensus for that? Put it in the Commissioner's Emergency Reserve.
Yes.
Yes. So, that puts that up about 845,000.
Mm-hmm.
I'm surprised we don't see anything from the state's attorney's office.
We did not receive anything.
Nope.
Okay.
All right, so, now we go to, if you flip to page 41, and 41 is for the other funds, which are included. So, you can see the 251 Fund, which is the Emergency Service Support Fund, the Billing Fund, a 252, there were no increases for that. 505 is the Activity Fund for Recreation and Parks, 520 is Mr. Shepherd, that's the Wycomico Golf Course. So, those are the changes there, and they are actually starting for the ECCs, I would say. Looks like page 71. And the first item under that column, 520, that's an increase in revenue, that would be in that fund, that's why it's a negative, okay? And so, it looks like the food for resale, the Riverview Restaurant, $20,000, that's on page 71. Liquor for the Riverview Restaurant, $6,000, equipment for the Wycomico. Now, the thing about the equipment for the Wycomico is, I guess you can blame that on finance. What happened is, it was a request to be equipment like the other vehicles that were included, and if you remember, we purchased the vehicles with the Commissioner's Emergency Reserve in FY 2024, the year we're in. The amount that did get approved or included, if you look at page 73, the 34,270, that was put in there as an exempt financing. So, if we treated this the same way as we treated the trailers that were...
Your sheds?
No, 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 no. The trailers that were done for the solid waste?
Oh.
We could do that, and the amount then would be 149,000, and we could use that amount out of the Commissioner's Emergency Reserve. You've got 570, 522, 350 after this morning's meeting, okay? So, you have enough to do that, and that's in this year. And if you were to do that, and we can submit a BA and get that signed by Commissioner Guy, you could actually reduce that 34,270 in the FY 2025 budget, in that Wycomico, which will help that fund cover the cost of the other items.
We want to help.
So, where it shows 114, that's 114, because that's the 114 plus the 34 to get to the 149, if it was going to be paid for in 2025 out of the 520 Fund, Wycomico, all right? So, but if we decided, if you wanted to do the same and treat them the same way how they should have been treated, then it would, we could use the Commissioner's Emergency Reserve in the current year for 149,000, and then we would reduce the 34,0270 in FY 2025, which will make their bottom line look better in 2025.
No, that's, that's, that sounds, that sounds reasonable.
Reasonable, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. And I believe there's a, in the 530 Fund, that $9,300, it's actually a wash.
Wasn't that the dollar increase?
Well, that was on page...
78...
I think it's an increase in revenue.
68.
Yep, yep. And an increase in expense, so that's really a wash within that 930, 530 Fund. So, commissioners, I do believe we have received all the direction that we came with, and...
So, just backing up to page 48 that Lori pointed out, it looks like it's a request to increase the recommended donation amount from $6 to $7, is that...
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that something we need to approve, too?
Well, that's part of the revenue. And I believe it's on the revenue sheet.
I think so. So, there's a suggested donation for those 60 and older, for anyone under the age of 60 who has a meal, that is the cost of the meal for them.
Sure, are we good with that?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with it.
Thank you.
Yep.
And we did include in the public hearing her department as far as increases in public fees, so I think we're okay with that, too. It's, it's a minimal amount.
Okay.
It's a good price for lunch.
Any other direction? Joy, where do we left with?
665, 989, fund balance. And... And then we're putting 316, 922 in the Emergency Reserve.
So, we are balanced, again.
Now, what are we going to do next week?
What do you want to do?
Do we need a budget work session?
I don't think you do.
Okay.
Now, I mean, we could probably get it approved next week if you want, or...
Well, we ought to meet to at least do that, I guess.
Well, I think that's during a morning meeting, it's already scheduled in, right?
Yep, it is.
So, just skip no budget work session, and we'll come back on the 21st for the approval.
That was 21st we were doing that.
Yeah.
So, we're not going to listen to any more appeals or any more...
No.
Request?
Right? Nope, that'll be good, it'll give us... It'll give us more time, we can get everything...
Won't approve until 21st.
21st.
So, we could cancel next budget work session.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Oh, we're gonna cancel that.
All righty, we'll see you on the 21st, all balanced and everything ready to go.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody, for being here today.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.